Our department reports to this time, so that you have specific questions for public works, or at least this is the time to ask those. Um, we're into our finance report, um, and our liaison reports during this time. Just to streamline things during the regular session. The idea being this is the informational portion of the meeting. The regular session is the action portion of the meeting. That's when we actually do the work of the city council. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm good. I don't have anything for this. I did not get anything together, so we can go right to department ones. So who wants to go first?
Um, let's start with the good news. Chief has a lot of stuff to talk about. Um, then I'm gonna put this in manager comments, but you've gotten a bunch of letters about the work of the police department.
Yeah, no, I'm uh, I'm excited about that. We're, we're putting in the work. And I, when I get a phone call or someone holds me inside their panting talking about something. It's like, what, what's it gonna be? And um, I got a phone, phone call from Chris Kattell, from Albert Kattell. And uh, Chris, Chris left me a message to say, hey, we can talk about something. Last thing, my wife still wanted to be married, so uh, we were good there. Um, but anyhow, I give Chris a phone call. And he said, hey, I just wanted to know, is there something that happened at our business? Like, why did we have this business check card from Officer Newbauer? Uh, through the mail slot in our office. It's like, well, let me explain to you. This is a great question and thanks for asking. Um, so I, I let him know that as a part of our graveyard, and actually, we expect all officers to actively patrol this specifically graveyard. To take the time out of the shift to park the car, get out, you go out outdoors. Maybe you go and check the actual door to make sure that it's locked. Windows are secure, nothing suspicious going around the property. And then give them a card with your name on it, and then they know they can check the property. So that's what happened. Officer Newbauer stopped by their office. Checked it out, gave them a card, and that's what it was about. So um, that, that's a good thing. That's a win on our side. Uh, and I appreciate him being so thankful that that's what we were doing. Because once I explained it, he was, he was pretty happy about that. So, good job to Officer Newbauer. Um, I got another letter in the mail. Uh, it's actually from a gentleman. He, he sent it to Mayor Burris and the council. I don't know if you guys got it or not. Um, but it was dated July fourteen. And this is in regards to originally, we knew about this ordinance violation. But the person actually came to counsel and, and shared it during um. Uh, public comment, their concern that they had was trash buildup, roads, uh, vehicles stored in the roadway. And since, we had to go through a very uh, specific process, which is not under ordinance, but we were able to work through. And mitigate that and give everything cleaned up. People brought a dumpster in, got it cleaned up. And so it was a very nice letter, uh, thanking uh, our code enforcement and, and myself. To ensure that uh, we got that taken care of. So I was happy about that. Uh, I got another, actually I got a phone call from Mayor Burris, uh, in regards to Officer Martinez and the contact with uh, Mayor Burris. And I was very thankful to be able to put that information together and get that out to um. Officer Martinez and his contact, Officer Martinez had a contact with a person that was trespassing uh, at a local church. And um, it was a very complex and emotionally charged interaction. Uh, by the person that Officer Martinez was um, talking with. And um, but what the mayor, uh, Burris saw was uh, the fact that. Officer Martinez was calm, cool, collected, and handled the situation appropriately. And so I was very happy to hear that positive feedback. Might as well. I don't know if you have anything going on.
No, you did really good. When you see a gigantic dog jumping at some of the fallen eight dollars, he says he did good, uh, screaming, yelling, all the. That's what got our attention. We went up and watched. We're like, yeah, that was very impressive. Yeah, it was loud.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um, thankfully, uh, myself and Sean from Public Works, uh, him, um. And so our code enforcement, Sergeant Harold, Sergeant Hollis, we've been actively walking downtown. And interacting with public and business owners, and we've got thanks from them as well. And I just appreciate Sean and Public Works for uh, their ability to partner with us. And to look at stuff. Um, for example, even today, um, I received information about She Park, uh, St. Elmore Park. And the concern that there might be some activity under the bridge. Um, Sergeant Hollis, I walked out the other day. Uh, there's some abandoned property which we're gonna work with ODOT on getting out of there. But um, it uh, it's been good. I think there's more to come. I won't take all, all Sean's uh, comments on that, but that, that's been good for us as well as receiving. Uh, positive feedback within that. Am I missing anyone?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I would, if you have any questions about our reports or anything else, it's going on.
I think it's wonderful. Good for you, and thank you for sharing here.
Are we even able to do any uh, controls in the downtown area?
Yes, um, but. There, they've been, well. Sergeant Hollis had opportunity to work graveyard. And our graveyard officers are parking their car, getting out and walking. But for daytime, um, having advanced downtown patrols. Uh, starting on July second, that happened. And that's when uh, Sean from Public Works and I went down there. And um, there's, there's several things that we, we noted and, but it was productive. The engagement was good. And uh, so July second, seventh. On the seventh, actually, I went down there twice, uh, the night, two different times. And then um, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be scheduled times. It's gonna be sporadic. We're not gonna be predictable. Um, but again, Sergeant Hollis and I went down there today, uh, did some walks, um. Good, good conversation with uh, the liquor store, for example, because they're having problems. That's their parking lot. But, and I don't know if I, I know, I don't know if it's your, um. Um, but the, there's a P for parking. On Ivy at second with an arrow that points over to the liquor store parking lot. A city sign?
Uh huh.
Uh, and so, I, you know how, you know how you drive around an area and you're gonna never pay attention to these things? And then you get out of your normal and you start looking.
It's across the street.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out like, why, why do they have problems with general public just turning into the parking lot parking? Well, it's because that big, big P with an arrow, oh, you're not parking lot. And so we just need to screw the arrow because it's on, I mean, it's, it's near that parking lot.
Yeah.
That is our parking lot. We just wanted to tell them. So, long answer, but yes.
So, you know, that must be issues, and less seeing the everybody's presence. Definitely good opportunity. I think last time in Mayor's office on graveyard, we were working at the office in the shop at like twelve thirty at night, rearranging. We got that little.
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
And so.
Is okay?
Yeah, it's pretty, I haven't checked on it. It's always on our lights on, people moving to that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree. This Wednesday is the next survey.
Thursday, Thursday from five thirty to six.
Yes, Thursday, this Thursday.
Yes, just a reminder. And National Night, National Night Out Tuesday, fifth from five to seven at Good Street Park. If anybody wants to be in the duct tape, we are funding buildings.
Let's try it.
What time is that, sorry?
Five. Tuesday the fifth, yes.
Be a great time. Yeah, a hundred and, right before the fair. It is. Uh, a hundred and fifty, I should, a hundred and fifty hamburgers, fifty hot dogs, maybe a server or whatever. Uh, but Tom said it in. Five o'clock, seven. Of two hundred and ice cream sandwiches. Um, can we generally do this in quick, like forty minutes?
Thanks, Mayor. You got any other questions, Mark? What I see? Anything? Wants to go next?
Set a couple of words to you. We're next, Mark. So, that reoccurred theme is. Twenty eighth of Black there, uh, streets, roads, being terrible condition, homeless measures, detractiveness. So we're gonna have deadlines. Actually, I'm gonna add, update you more in detail of everything, when applying for a payment grants. And all that can give you, the members on our app, but uh, definitely working hard to try to find funds. Pursue the pattern, folks, that help us get projects done. Um, roads and streets, we've already started our baby season. Uh, Tyler, street supervisor, who got the intersection of all spruce down there. Between the junior high and elementary school done. So that crosswalk, it needs to be established, so it's not a trip hazard. Um, also at the end of Meadow Street, that project's done, the list station, so that got paved. And then we're repairing it, paid for street. So that's moving. Um, and again, Sean, that with me and Nick about, hey, let's try to see what we can do to do something. To turn the tide with the homeless services and take over the downtown. So we started that. Under his guidance there, and I agree a hundred and twenty percent of it. It's been awesome. Uh, we've been working together really great just this morning. I went out at dawn, and there's like this stupid little tent named, what like a little, I don't understand a tent in the middle sidewalk. On Ivy Street, and you can see like moving around there, so pull up. And you can't have it here. It's a sidewalk. You have to move that way. The whole tent like lifts up and starts blocking. Unzip, then they're doing something. So we push them off, and I said, hey, you can't be on private property, can't be in front of businesses, can't be in the public, you just happen to be gone from here. I don't care where, but not here. Or they go over safe, right? I call BD, we're nine one one on nursing number. Sabre's there, awesome. Get rid of them, run them off. Kind of whack them, we live in the center of your father. So we spent the morning chasing those people around. Finally got them. Got the person sleeping down on ramp now. Here's some gal, woke her up, got her out of here. Got the guy sleeping in front of money watered out. Got the guy that's been living behind the chamber. In the dungeon, all the terrorists just been concerned about. So just keep a steady pressure, being humane, treating them dignified. But getting them out of town. If you're shopping cart, get it out. If you jump around town, get it out. Just every morning, keep doing a sweep and keeping them out. It's turn the tide. So I'm happy with, I'm happy with what's going on. And like Nick said, we'll get good feedback, um, from business owner, Tim Chambers, very happy with what's going on. Terry's very happy with what's going on. So some of the people that business downtown responded very positively to what's going on. So it's great. We'll keep that moving just this afternoon. And they found another big old pile of junk down in front of streets, so one of the technicians, the policy team down, cleaning it up, so. Put forth a lot of effort. It's awesome. It's getting rid of it. It is detracting a little bit from some of our board duties, but I get it. That's kind of the effort of the public. They wanna see that progress down town between it. So bear with us, we can't keep everything moving along, but we are focusing on downtown. And it's getting good results. Um. Other than that, I'd like to turn it over to Adam. So I tried to come in here, at least for border, to get you guys' update, get in touch with me. What does Adam do? And what is he doing specifically for us providing? So this is his opportunity, my opportunity, to share. What he's doing, try to get funds for us, though. If you're okay, can I have?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, sir.
One question, yes. Uh, what's the post office? And then somebody pointed out to me at the post office that on the sidewalk. Where it kind of bumps out, it could be on the north side, there's a big uh, piece where there's supposed to be like a sign bolted on. Have you, have you seen that?
Over the post office?
Oh, right in front of the post office.
Is it the little, is it the bracket that connects the?
It's like a triangle looking big bracket. It's like this far up on the sidewalk with nothing on, just like a trip. And that's what I told him. I think that's what I, but I told him I'd break it to you just to make sure, but I think that's what I thought.
It is.
That's what I told him, so, okay.
Yeah, and I'm probably not gonna get much response from ODOT and stuff like that.
I, I told him I would say, so again, yeah, but I've never noticed it, so it's one of those things I never saw.
Yeah, ODOT, ODOT has continued some signs downtown. We're working the chamber on that, and they put one up, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. For the infections, Sean?
Yeah.
Honorable mayor, counselors, and most esteemed fellow coworkers. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to present my quarterly report to you. And I'm happy to tell you that work is ongoing within the city of Tillamook, and your tax dollars are going to projects. That are going to be very successful and beneficial to the community. First project, East Gate lift station. The instruction was completed this quarter. Island Road tide gate replacement, phase one. Construction also completed this quarter. Annual ODFW report will be due annually for the next five years on April twenty eighth, consecutively every year for the next five years. Island Road tide gate replacement, phase two. I recently secured a cost estimate for both right engineering to design phase two of this project. The assessment was necessary to begin applying for grant funds. In order to um, complete both the construction and the design of the project. I've also contacted a construction firm to begin soliciting a quote for connecting the two storm drains together. Prior to complete, quote being completed, uh, the pipe will need to be cleaned and inspected, and our sewer back truck is currently down, so we're unable to clean that. I hope to have it done um, by the end of the year.
Can you explain what phase two is?
So what phase one of the, one was, was to clean the trench as well as install the new tide gate. Phase two is going to be to connect the storm drain system that is the old Safeway parking lot. To the trench that was recent, recently cleaned up. It's part of phase one. I'm also, since you mentioned that subject, I'm also very happy to announce that tonight, I did also receive a letter. Uh, from our partners at TBF ID in regards to phase two, and I can go ahead and read that letter briefly to you. The Tillamook Bay Flood Improvement District partners with the city of Tillamook and other partners on phase two of High League Road East project. Along with other contributing partners, TBF ID will provide reasonable matching funds for phase two of the project. So now we should announce that tonight, because it was received just today from our partners.
Do you know what their definition of reasonable?
Um, if they didn't want to put in the letter, I would decline to say it, but we do have an idea. The next project, city property transfer. This has been an ongoing project for ten years now. Um, there's been some back and forth with the web to try and get this project done. Um, but I hope to also have this transferred and completed by the end of the year. Water rate study was completed and presented before city council, one of your previous meetings, so I believe you. All have the results of that water rate study, as conducted by RCAC. While I'm talking about RCAC, I'd also like to announce that tonight, at the actual council meeting, RCAC will be here. Uh, to give a presentation to help us with a LMI study. Um, that is necessary for us to um, obtain grant funds um, from CDVG. As you may know, uh, we qualified for CDVG in the past, but because of our income levels as the city, according to HUD. We are now too high. So this, then your study is necessary in order to qualify uh, again. And there will be a full presentation on that tonight, um, at the actual council meeting. And that will be done by our partners at RCAC. Well, to construction, project manager, city engineer reached out to business organ, we scheduled one stop meet to locate grant funding options. I'm still trying to locate grant uh, funds. This was designed with CDVG, but again, we can't use the funds for construction because we no longer qualified. Warline phase one, project plans are currently being finalized. We hope to go to bid for construction by the end of third quarter. I'm also looking for ways to close the budget shortfall on this project. Warline phase two, fund request has been submitted to congressional delegates in the amount of four million dollars to Senator Mercury's office. And I'm also still looking for other ways that we can potentially apply to more grant funds for that project. Wish for our master plan proceeding on schedule. Screw press building, Losora engineers was chosen to complete the design of this project. Design is currently estimated at twenty percent completed. Susan H. Elmore Park seawall, green infrastructure grant amount of a hundred eighty seven thousand was applied for in decline, fortunately. The ground for that application grant was applied for from business organs amount of fifty five thousand, and the result of that grant application is still pending. Susan H. Elmore Plan Monitoring, city successfully completed monitoring report on time. Our next report is due in January twenty twenty six, and we still have at least three years left on doing the annual reporting. Um, pending uh, their decision from lands conservation. Postville Park, this is uh, one project that is a big win for the city. Project manager slash city engineer successfully funded this project, will pay a hundred percent of grant funds and matching funds, hundred percent grants. Contract will be signed by the city manager by the end of this month. Construction is expected to begin two months after the contract is signed. Due to the lead time on part equipment that I'll be ordering, which I want to fully execute the contract before I order that part of it. Construction uh, should be starting in October and should be completed by hopefully November of this year. Grove Avenue project. Project manager, city engineer has completed a grant application for the green infrastructure grant to improve walkability and scenery along Grove. Grove Avenue. Unfortunately, we did not receive this grant, which was in the amount of a hundred thousand, but I will be reapplying next year. If you're not familiar with the Green Infrastructure Grant Program, uh, we were successful in applying in conjunction with TEP. To do the bioswells in the downtown area. So even though we didn't get the grant, Green Infrastructure Grant for this particular project, we did get it for one of our other projects. And that's really the most you can expect, because they do have the grant funds by region, so. Tillamook High School, I'm currently looking into emergency funding for the Safe Rasses School Program. I've conducted a site visit with the school principal Jill. Uh, we have a preliminary design plan that we're currently discussing. And we hope to finalize that and maybe apply it for up to three million dollars in Safe Rasses School funding. Emergency harness upgrades. City staff radios are currently extremely short range, so we're looking for upgrades. In conjunction with the county, there is a FEMA approved natural, well, multi-jurisdictional hazard hazards mitigation plan program. That allows us to upgrade our radios, which we plan on applying for in conjunction with Tillamook County. As well as making sure that all of our radio systems are interoperable with the county systems. New work vehicles, city vehicles are currently in poor condition and require frequent repairs. I'm currently looking into grant opportunities for new work vehicles through the state's zero emissions program and through the state's public works fund. Five oh one oh one plant boxes bioswells, this is the grant that I mentioned for the uh, in conjunction with TEP. Um, to redo the banner boxes along five oh one oh one. And do a downtown beautification pro- uh, project to add native species to those bioswells. Which we believe will significantly beautify the downtown area and be a benefit to the downtown businesses in those areas. And that grant was for fifty thousand, six hundred ninety dollars, obviously. Holden Creek Miller Culver replacement, Tillamook County, the city Tillamook submitted a joint grant application to cover hydrology study for the creek. As well as to cover the cost of designing a new culver on Miller Avenue. This grant application was in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars and is currently pending a decision. Holden Creek tide gate replacement, project manager is looking for funds to provide the design and construction funds necessary to replace existing tide gate. Along Holden Creek on behalf of our project partners. I'm still looking. There was some tide gate funding, it got pulled, so I'm waiting for a new program to come out. Hopefully soon, uh, this, such two or three tidings, say. Um. So I believe there's multiple tidings on Holden Creek, and there is the opportunity of replacing with just one for our three small. So depending upon how they wanna do it. Sewer infrastructure rehabilitation, project manager, city engineer, fight for clean water, SRF funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And this sorting grant for technical studies in the amount of fifty thousand. Uh, both funds will be used for climate purposes and are still pending an award decision. Uh, half per back on the hundred thousand dollars, not a final answer, but we are on the state's intended use plan. And that is the big step forward towards hopefully qualifying for about a hundred thousand dollars. Now something we applied to back in December of last year, so it does take a while on some days. Derelict RVs, I'm currently, I applied for orphan cleanup uh, site. Grant to address the derelict RVs that have been found around town that are currently in our public works yard that we have to pay to test for asbestos. Um, for D E P requirements before we can dispose of them. Homeless encampments, also apply for the orphan cleanup site to address homeless encampment cleanups. Um, I'm also currently looking into uh, the Waring Health Authority. They also have a brand. That can do cleanup around our well sites that are within the fifteen year time of travel for groundwater. Um, so I'm also looking into those options as well. Um, we also took quite a few pictures of some of the homeless encampments around town. Um, so we can include that in our grant applications as to why uh, these ones are necessary to help clean Tillamook up. Police Department grants, I'm currently working with the police department to apply and track multiple grants for our police department. Hopefully we'll have more news on that in the future. Shark containers, I'm applying for a grant from public health to install shark containers in all of our public brushing facilities. That way the needles can go in boxes with hopefully all the ground. Disaster supplement grant program. I'm currently applying for the fiscal year twenty twenty five disaster supplemental grant program. For up to twenty to fifty million dollars in grant funds for increasing economic activity in industrialized sectors. CBG income study, um, this is the income study that I mentioned, uh, through RCAC. Where they will be conducting this income study at no cost to the city. Um, that is necessary for us to qualify for the CBVG grant again, which is a hundred percent grant, typically no match.
So, when you said that the first time.
Yes.
I still have my same question with this. Uh, what kind of income are you talking about that this study, cities income, the residents? Better below poverty or?
We'll, we'll talk about that. Um, this, it's actually your personal income. Um, they, they use census data for some of this to um, determine. But this is a more in-depth study that census data is more general. This is more in-depth. We will talk about this. It's not a privacy thing at all. Um, we will, we'll get into it with our presentation tonight, friend.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Sean, for that explanation. Um, we will get all the details tonight during the presentation on LMI and. All these other numbers that are used um, in the criteria for determining eligibility.
Well, those are very like, it sort of sounded like the risk of us using, uh, losing access to CBVG grants in the future. Then on how this study comes out.
Hmm, we can't judge that for sure, counselor. Um. The CBVG has certain thresholds that have to be met for, for different criteria. There are different grants that have different criteria. Um, this is something that we're going to do so that we can make sure that we meet all eligible. Eligibility criteria. We can't predetermine, you know, that we're gonna end the, the survey one way or the other. And we don't want to bias those results in one way or the other. Uh, so we have to be very careful about how we talk about it. Uh, but we do need to make sure that we are, uh, that we're meeting eligibility requirements. And this survey is something that we can do to help us make sure that we meet eligibility.
Gotcha, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Please not.
In a roundabout way, not saying anything at all?
No, I think I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I've been in a little bit, CBVG in the past, short of life. It's really an important resource.
Yes.
So when he mentioned what he did, I was.
Yeah.
Concerned that I'm far away that possibility, I go.
We will, we will go into a lot more detail during the regular session.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a few more items on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and skip ahead. You should all have a copy of this, so I'm not gonna answer any questions we have at the end. But just skipping ahead to the performance metrics, uh, we requested over twenty seven million dollars in funding. We secured ninety five thousand, six hundred ninety plus the amount from our partners. Um, hundred sixty thousand in cost savings and a total fund is prepared plus cost savings of two hundred fifty six thousand dollars. Thanks so much. I'll now open up, open it up to any questions you may have.
Yes, that's wonderful.
I have a couple of questions. So uh. I'm sure it's on your calendar, but the county line Holden Creek, the next meeting is August ninth, August eleventh.
Okay.
Okay, um, at that time, I made you a disc.
Yes.
That was a personal disc with my daughter's data.
Yes.
Can I copy, get it back to you?
I will get it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the wish one treatment plan, that plan, you said it's on schedule, what is, what's the schedule? When will that be completed? Uh, what's the schedule there?
My understanding is by the end of the year. I don't have a hard date for you. While you're saying it's by the end of the year, I don't have a hard date for you, but it should be completed by August. Uh if it's not, I will definitely update you on that extension uh at my next quarterly report.
Okay, and then we're working with some partners on the native species and bioswells. With Tillamook Astor's partnerships, we know what native species they're looking and putting in there, we tried to put in native grass. At one point, but they uh there's no water in the summertime, so they all died out.
Right. So, yes, we do have, I have given them a direction. Uh for plants that I think would be a good idea that are native, um that I think would do well in those areas. Um we do open ourselves up to the recommendations of T E P since they are the plant experts. Um if you would like to see the planting schedule, I can request that from our partners and. Present it to.
Just because I believe when they're planted, I'm planting because we've tried multiple species and every one of them have failed.
We're also working with the Chamber of Commerce as well, so they are having like on what plans to be local downtown businesses that we'd like to see as well.
Do you know if there's a program to water said plants during the summertime during the dry season? That's why they die is because they got no water and that's not true soil in there. And so the roots didn't have anywhere to go. Go down and get the. To happen to the water.
Well, that was part of the reason, one, there were small plants to be here, but you have someone that didn't have the water. But what T E P is proposing is local species that will dry our coastal environment instead of or affect our livelihood. So that's gonna be the difference.
Okay.
Yeah, this clarification.
Thank you. Uh and then one last one, uh. We planted a peace tree. Over at the uh the park by the.
South street.
No, no, this street, no, I can't, which one was it, this street park? Not the end of this street, but it's.
Oh.
By the. I can't even think of it, um. Yeah, what about what is?
Perfect.
Yeah. So that peace tree could be, we didn't know if it's a sign, if it was gonna be male or female. If we got what we got. Have we noticed any fruit growing on that? There should be some fruit growing by now, and if there is, that means that it's stinky guy.
We shy.
I have no knowledge of peace.
Okay, we just need to be prepared with this.
Because if it is the fruit bearing, then. Once that fruit gets ripe and starts to fall, it smells like you're on course or in the moment. So it's it's not. Yeah, and it was a crap shoot whether we got a male or a female tree.
Well, I bring that to the city's attention just that could be coming up here in small.
Along the bioswells, since it is along a highway, uh line of sight is a concern that I have. Uh so I did put in a maximum height restriction law for that, so I'll see you later.
That's it for me.
Who else?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay, so in your packets, I've got pretty much my same report that I always turn on, those gives you a list of everything will be done. You notice in the footage, we all have that section. Um, a lot of those are incomplete, we had a deadline of June twenty four P of this month. So a lot of, we have probably three applications that fell off and they'll resubmit once they got, they were waiting on engineering, they just could. So they will now fall under the same FEMA requirements, but without that habitat, we just are just gonna have a letter for no biology, so basically say. Well, they'll won't have a take, we can't say those species, can you have that? There you go. Um, we did uh. Several uh permits this this in June, I've been really grand up this month. Um, we have several big projects coming on the pipe, including some legislative pieces that'll be coming at you soon. So I will keep you posted on that in my July report. And then other than that, um first part of June is pretty quiet, and usually you have um, you have so many questions.
Go ahead.
So I know this was mentioned under public works as well, about the T H S safe routes, the school project. What is the project? That we're looking at some of the last three reports.
Yeah, I had just a preliminary kind of overtake in the uh review of it, so uh we can probably be talking about it more, but. Haven't come before me yet, so I think they're trying to secure funding versus how we're gonna have preliminary plan, but basically. There's been too many accidents along there, so we're looking at fencing off the entire parking lot and then having a. Well, I don't know what's been decided yet, but a structure over the top I moved for a while, we, is that, do you tell us that?
That was me that was working on it.
Okay. So um they're just looking at some different lights that they can.
Are we talking about the east lot? Fencing, just like how they have at the west lot, putting fencing along the sidewalk.
So, yeah, there's, there's the main high school and then across the street is the parking lot. And there she is where the kids go over the parking lot to the school, that's where a lot of these accidents are happening. Some of this due during low lighting conditions, so parking lot lights would be a very easy solution called for visibility. As well as minimizing the amount of places that hits the cross street by adding a fence and then all the damage, you know, because it crosswalks, that would eliminate jail walking.
Right, um you know. I know this isn't you, this is a county, there's no where to, we heard anything on field house permitting?
Yeah, they.
Another, they're working on a a permit to. Change the the line county line or something?
Well, no, that would be a huge undertaking and take years, so because it's farmland, it's outside U G B. So that whole process would take forever, so.
Side.
So the last I heard, they were gonna resubmit and have the field house move so it's inside the city limits. So that way they don't have to deal with that, because I think when they had their soil testing deck, they found out that it's farmland. And because of soils that are found there, I don't know that. Yeah, causing a huge headache. So I think they went back to the drawing board to see if they can figure that or if they need to completely put it inside the city limits.
This quick question. If they were, let's say that that field was privately owned and the city was to. Use eminent domain to seize it, to build, they have to go through these same permitting things?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because.
Even through eminent domain?
Yes, because even when you have. So it's outside of U G B and it's also outside of the city limits. It's not in the U G B, if it was in the U G B.
How is that not an issue? That's crazy.
But because of, yeah, because the one in the way the property was split and acquired. It never went through proper, so it's considered farming outside of U G B. And for something like that, you have to give U G B expansion, which we could do with our U G B expansion, we're looking at that in the future. Is fixing those along with some other issue, whatever, on twelve, and do it part of our future expansion. But to do that, I mean, we're talking, I don't know, Sean, what are we looking at, two or three years down the road?
Probably, and just as a, to add on to what she's talked about, eminent domain is only about taking ownership. Of the property, it does not absolve us from permitting and following our own rules for how to build within that property.
Just don't understand how that is outside of here about that.
That happened way back when, that's, that's long time ago.
All right, and then uh I didn't see a permit. In here, applying for for a new mural, it looks like there might be a new mural going in like a restaurant or restaurant beauty. On the eleventh.
I wondered about that, I saw him putting a prime around Saturday and.
There's a big circle, big white circle, which I don't know if it's gonna be the logo. But I don't know if it's big enough that it qualifies as a mural.
Yeah, we'll have to enforce particularly by it.
And so.
No, anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, just commuting, but I think we've heard, we've got finance, just the next on your, your list is finance, so. What's your door, Jimmy?
I don't have any thanks for deciding, um I included what we're sitting at at the end of June this year, of course, we obviously don't have all the July's numbers yet. Um, if there's any questions on finance? I do have you guys scheduled, I want to make sure it works on everybody's calendar, so September fifteenth, before the council meeting, the F C S coming to do training that night. Making sure everybody can be there that night, the fifteenth. It'll be just before the council meeting, so like during.
During the session.
Yeah, it'll be that time.
It'll be the sixth of.
Yeah, yeah. And then a reminder of League of Oregon Cities coming on the twenty seventh of September, which is Saturday. Um I did reserve the port, the other, we're gonna have it out there.
We've got a lot of those, because I've got a couple of those discussed too.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, I'm so, uh, which one is that on, what's it?
League of Oregon Cities. That's on the twenty seventh of September.
Twenty seven.
It's a Saturday.
What time?
Um, she hasn't given me the complete times yet, but I imagine it's probably gonna be from like nine to two.
Oh, I got it.
We're inviting other cities, so it's gonna be probably a lot of people that.
What was, was it September fifteenth, that first day you said?
Yes, but that's right before the council meeting, the council meeting night on the fifteenth, and then the twenty seventh is Saturday.
Or might be only in that city.
The way.
There's a different training each time.
Yeah, yeah, one's put on by C I S and one's put on by the league. Had two different trainings still.
Will there be breakfast?
I think I would hope so, I'll make sure there's food.
Or uh uh policy on fringe benefits.
Yeah.
What was the time on that L O C training?
I don't know yet, I haven't got this in any detail, but I have to know, it's gonna be morning.
In mind, I don't know where we got that.
She hasn't given me the time yet, so. I would, like I said, they're coming down in Portland, but they.
Sure. Anybody have any questions?
Did Mayor ask you to go through your uh tour report in the housing commission? We do have a couple of discussion items, but on those are overload. Um nodding your head action items, so those do need to be on the regular meeting, and it just got split on the regular session. And then I'll apologize to Chelsea, is anytime we are getting a knock on the head, we want that on the regular meeting.
So we'll start with those.
Yeah, so discussion items, just move it uh past the, the uh. Manager comments.
Yeah. Just make sure and remind me if I stay.
Yeah, I'll get there, because it'll be part of my manager comment.
Okay.
Really quick, have we seen an uptick in rooms being rented in town?
Actually, we're down right now. All across the board, last three months have not been great.
It's time to do local business today, and they said they felt the same thing, that the person has been down a shoe.
It really has, which it doesn't seem like it, when you drive downtown, it seems like it's never ending and the shadow was.
Really weird.
It has. But we're missing the red apple end. And believe it or not, they actually brought quite a few people on that hotel, so that's fun, so we're missing that one, but you.
Red apple completely closed right now?
Yes, literally, yes.
Are they renovating those ceilings?
Um, it's for sale, yeah, and it's empty. Yeah.
Yeah. Number four, Mayor. Planning for what should we do? Okay, who's on here? Well, there.
There is no, there is no meaning, so I'm not.
All right, there we go. Mayor, God, Eric, did you have anything else for the municipal housing?
I do.
You wanted that apart, guys?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Yeah, we'll see.
Um, so this month I had a report, but I also had uh your packets, my horrible screenshots. Because they wouldn't pass off the information to us, and so I said, do, this isn't just a preliminary draft. So that's why the screenshots, that's why I do some, so I apologize. Um, but I'd like you guys to look through that information, Parker's still putting this together, he leaves the housing board even between county. He would appreciate any feedback, if we guys had, if we can contact him directly, he can make sure that added in. Because this is the county's, not ours, this is the county's uh housing needs analysis that they perform, and it's not finalized, you know, so we're still. It's, you know, it's. Um so basically, the whole meeting um on June that was to go over that entire draft and kind of get our feedback as far as the commission is concerned. And so then, like I said, those will all be considered when um. The F C S group is actually putting this document together for them. Uh the board of county commissioners will, once that's, they get their final draft, it will be for for county commissioners and the, both of them in place. Um, the next thing, uh that took the majority of the meeting, and then the next item that we had on there was just to mention that the next time funding is coming up. And so wait until fall, we decided early, so we're watching our web page, because I think it's coming about, and then. The end of August or mid-August, uh I leave. So you can check with Parker if you know any developers that want to get in on that, um. I can't remember what they have with the power lines right now, I don't think they've said that, because I think they're still updating what they have uh in there. Um, I think they're each other, Parker, send developers, it's like. Any questions?
They don't see very much population growth for the county, do they?
No, no, and there are some cities that um like Bay City, some of their. Numbers were, they felt like they weren't accurate. Um even for Tillamook, I felt like our numbers weren't accurate. Uh just because they're not accounting for, and there's no way to account for the housing pop, you know, the unhoused population. There, they move too much and there's, you know, care has kind of a needle on how much is there, but. Countywide, we have people living in the hills that we don't even know about, I mean, it's hard to really. Pinpoint those numbers, importantly, State University, you said that, I brought that back when we had posted it here for the initial um. Population survey, is that. You know, we don't have a way to have a definite tracking system for that, and so it's hard to capture that on what the action is.
Is it because of our urban growth boundary that they've only got us set at an increase of two hundred thirty one individuals in twenty years?
Um, we're figuring it out.
Uh. There's a page four. Population growth forecast. Twenty twenty five to twenty forty five. One year time, the West grew by two hundred thirty one individuals.
Yeah, and there, I didn't write down why I stated that was um. I didn't write down that they said.
It's a century and above.
It does, because we've had. I want to say over a thousand, no, I take that back, almost seven hundred what in the last fifteen years? Because it was when I came onboard in two thousand eighteen, it was fourteen, two hundred and nine.
So is that accommodated for like the new apartment complexes that we get coming every time?
Sorry, is it?
Have they accommodated for like the new apartment complex that's had to come in, putting more buildings in?
Yeah, that's all the reports we did, yes, you like any, any new buildings that went into place. Um, we report all the time, either down in the homes.
It just seems, oh, really all.
Yes, no, they don't.
They want to get a thousand people, counting by two thousand people.
And that's, that's why I said with those numbers, um better clarification, because F C S did this report. Reach out to Parker because a lot of the reasons why he's heading this with F C S.
It makes me wonder how much uh current economic factors are skewing these numbers long term, right? Usually, these types of studies, they'll look at move in rates over the last few years, moving has. Essentially stopped in the last two years.
Yeah.
And so, but if you look at that, you're seeing a very zero rate and. We're not seeing a steady trend up. Um and then part of it is our urban growth boundary and the factor of, yeah, building, housing. Pretty much anywhere in town until we get our sources out figured out, I think those are contributing factors to it. Uh but I don't know that for sure, council number, so uh we can get it, Parker, we'll talk with him tomorrow, see if we can get an answer.
And part of that house is community too, is, you know, people, I know quite a few people that are wearing the family numbers. Living in their cars, I mean, unless somebody just can't trust unless they're turning that information who cared, then they turn their birthday.
And not that it affects us as much, but secondary homes in the county could also contribute to that, that housing stock that isn't on the market. You're not permanent residents, and so you're seeing a little bit of a population decline from, especially on the the coastal cities. Um from those type of things.
Currently, we have twelve short-term houses and two of them dropped out of this last year because they couldn't get invited to. Um vacation, they weren't maybe, you know, I'm talking about somebody decided to be reluctant. Which I encourage most of the short-term rentals, the company, I say you can, but we have housing chores, a lot of people are home, they're out of town. And they inherited grandma's house, and they have no idea what our housing church looks like, and so. I try to encourage those people that give those song and homes to. Uh turn them into something monthly for our.
Great, thank you.
All right, if that's it, we do want to pause for nine minutes because we can't start until.
Correct. Yep, all right.